To be able to come to the school on a better weather day. So we are moving those violation hearings for people who have, you know, got on the wrong side of town to our next meeting as a convenience to them. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists and unmute you and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Our votes for this meeting will be conducted via roll call vote. Note at the end of this meeting being recorded that this meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to unmute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. All right, Michael would let me know if there's something like there is. And does the board want to discuss rescheduling to a special meeting sometime between now and our next meeting? And our next meeting is February 5th, I believe, right? And it seems, you know, Lynn, did we hear anything about folks who would need to be at our next meeting? That they said there's a problem, you know, waiting till the fifth, do they have to meet sooner?
I would need to defer to Mike on those conversations. I know he did reach out to everyone today.
Tom, I assume you're talking about the hearings, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, no one said otherwise right now. Whether or not they were available that day or not, because I was going to leave it up to the board to decide when they wanted to reschedule that too.
Right, and that was something I discussed informally with Lynn, you know, today. But, you know, it's only fair that we discuss it as a board. Mark Gold.
One is I know Mary Lee, who's our animal control officer is on and somebody may want to let her know that we don't need to, we're not going to have that hearing tonight.
She's actually on for the other topic, the request. So I coordinated with her earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing is, Tom, this is one of those unusual months with five Mondays. And so we could actually schedule something two weeks from today. And I know it's not a regular meeting day, but it is a Monday. We, many of us put aside Mondays. That might be something we want to consider. It's before the February 5th regular meeting date, which is probably going to be a packed meeting anyway.
Yeah, when I discussed it with Lynn, she thought we could fit this into the February 5th meeting. But I don't know if other board members have any opinion or has Lynn had any other comments?
Yeah, I know when we talked this morning, Tom, I thought that Mike and I had quickly talked at that point. And then Mike and I had a follow-up conversation later today and recognized what Mark had just said, that there's five Mondays. I do think there's a fiber meeting on the 29th. So that would be a conflict for one member. But we talked about potentially the 30th. To some extent, it would be nice to just have a meeting that dealt with those three hearings. And then you didn't have to worry about it at your meeting on the 5th. Because the next few meetings after that are going to be quite lengthy with the budget and capital plan.
Okay. Any reaction from other board members? I would take it Mark would think the 30th would be okay, that Tuesday? No?
For me to jump in quickly, what I think Mark is gonna unmute. But what Lynn said, yeah, we've got a fiber task force meeting. We've got a presenter coming, you know, coming to present that day. So, I mean, I personally think it'd be fine for us to meet on February 5th and wait till then and put off the hearings until then.
Okay. Yeah, there's a possibility that the hearings could go quicker because they'd have more time to collect data also.
I've got no problem with February 5th. I just didn't know if it was a full meeting. If there's time for it, let's just postpone everything till February 5th. That's fine.
Okay, Dan, did you have any? Do you feel one way or the other?
My audio.
Okay. So you're saying the thumbs up on the meeting on the 5th or on the 30th?
On the 5th.
5th, all right. All right, so let's just, we'll stick with that plan. We'll just have to move along quickly. We've been able to do that in the past. All right. So next we have announcements. And if anything changes, you know, we'll talk to the board about if we need to have a meeting. If, you know, if Lynn looks and Mike looks to schedule and say, this is impossible. We're not going to do this in one night. So so some announcements, the lifeguard certification course for the Long Meadow Park and Recreation Department is going to be happening. The course is from February 20th to 23rd. And this certification includes first aid, CPR and AED training. Registration closes on February 6th. The class size is limited, so register early and visit the Long Meadow Police, oh no, Long Meadow LPRD, which is the Recreation Department, right? Okay, for additional information, registration. Of course, we always need certified lifeguards in town. On 2024, the annual town meeting. You know, we have a, it's set for Tuesday, May 14th. And it's citizen petitions for articles are due to the Select Board's office no later than 4:30 on Monday, January 29th, 2023. That would be 2024. That was a mistake there. So that's coming up soon. In order for a petition to be guaranteed, placement on the annual town meeting warrant, 10 names, signatures and addresses of registered voters must be confirmed and certified by the town clerk. And they're required and instructions are available on the town website at www-longmeadowma.gov. The town election is set for Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. At the Long Meadow Community House, nomination papers are now available in the clerk's office at 20 Williams Street until March 1st, 2024. The deadline to submit nomination papers for certification is 5:00 PM on March 5th. And we're listing of open terms and upcoming election as well as a calendar for important dates and deadlines. Visit longmeadowma.gov/elections. We are always looking for qualified people to run for public office. So next we go to resident comments. Is there anyone at the meeting who are interested in a comment? They could raise their hand.
Yep, I see one attendee with their hand up, so I'm going to move them in now.
Great, thank you. Mr. Shay, can you hear me?
Yes, Tom, I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you and if you could just give us your name and address. You can turn on your camera if you'd like, but it's awesome.
Oh, I'm having a little video problem here, but I give it one quick shot, right?
All right. All right, well, why don't you move forward if you can?
I will, Tom, thank you. So, Tom Shay, 81 Green Meadow Drive, Long Meadow. Each of you should be in receipt of an email from me earlier today. Tom, Mr. Micasia, I would like this correspondence placed on Zoom call if you may. And Mike, you can sort that out, or Tom, if you can give him permission. But my comments this evening are directed at the Finance Committee and its recent letter to the Select Board concerning Bliss Pool before it gets any traction. I am confident the Select Board will do the right thing. And it was good to hear that the lifeguard class has been scheduled and is fully subscribed. I commend the town for that. The Finance Committee wants the Bliss Pool renovation to be delayed and states there is no legal regulatory or policy rationale for this proposed expense. It is purely discretionary. I note the 1.2 million expenditure is not an expense, but a capital expenditure. Article 8, which I sent to you and you know what it is, clearly stated the expenditure would be made from available funds, which is free cash and taxpayer money. The descriptive paragraph of the warrant states construction is planned for the winter and spring period. Section 2.8 of the town charter states that the descriptive paragraph of the article is prepared by the Select Board and reflects its intent. Town meeting members, citizens, taxpayers approve the Bliss Pool renovation and gave the town a mandate. Renovation is fully funded from available cash and will not increase taxes or expenses. So absent an earthquake at Bliss Park, the renovation must proceed. The RFP should go out at the end of January. Secondly, the Finance Committee is concerned about the cost of operating the Bliss Pool and its impact on the ability to fund the OPEB contribution in light of the shortfall in the first pass of the 2025 budget. There are no concerns retiring medical will not be funded. I believe the operating costs and the OPEB contribution are in the first pass budget. By having the warrant article for Bliss Pool, it was an implied commitment to fund its operations. The cost of operating Bliss Pool is immaterial to the projected deficit and to the overall town budget. I can identify 100,000 or more of cost savings that I'll make sure in the first pass, which I expect they already are. The initial budget always has a deficit and I trust the town manager, finance director, school department and other departments and the Select Board will make it work as they always have. Third, the Finance Committee is concerned about the OPEB contribution not being funded. This contribution to the unfunded is not required by any legal or regulatory body. The town has funded less than the formulae contribution in the past and also funded more. Maybe we should get credit for the overfunding. There are three methods to assure funding. They are, number one, tighten the overall budget as has been historically done and the OPEB amount is already in there. Utilize the 500,000 free cash from fiscal 2023 available to fund a large percentage of the OPEB contribution. Number three, utilize a small percentage of the stabilization fund and free cash. The stabilization fund and free cash of the town were a healthy, and I quote from the town's financial statements, which are very good, by the way. It's 14 and a half percent of operating revenue as of June 30, 2023. The amount is 12.9 million. The state and Long Meadow policy says the number should be 5 to 10%. So there's an excess reserve in free cash of between 5.8 and 8.5 million of taxpayer funds that can be used to fund the 694,000 formulaic OPEB contribution. I'm always willing to discuss OPEB with the 25 people in the town that are conversing in it. In summary, the Finance Committee letter was well-intentioned, but I would ignore it for the following three reasons. One,
Please read this up, Mr. Shay.
I only got three sentences, Tom. The Bliss Pool capital contribution renovation is approved by the town citizens and fully funded. Operating expenses are immaterial and will be sorted out as part of the overall budget as is typically done. Third and finally, there are three options to fund the OPEB contribution that is already included in the first pass budget. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other resident comments, Joe, with Michael? I guess not?
Just switching back to that screen, it doesn't look like it, no.
All right, so next we can go to Select Ward comments. And I guess I'll just start with saying that, you know, the Select Board always does its best to make the right decisions. And in our town, the legislative body is the public, you know, the voters at town meeting. They make the decisions and, you know, as elected members of the Select Board, we try to make sure that what voters have asked for happens. And so that's our job. And I'm sure that's what we'll be doing in this situation. And that's the end of my comments. Dan, you had your hand up first.
Great, thank you, Tom. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I did have a couple of things I had prepared that I just wanted to mention during these comments. So first things first, I also did want to address the letter from the Finance Committee. So first, just, I want to respond and weigh in regarding the letter from the Finance Committee. You know, first and foremost, let me just say that I certainly appreciate the Finance Committee's service to our town, their opinion on OPEB and the funding of Bliss Pool. However, the Finance Committee already did bring up their opinion in front of the residents at town meeting. And it's very clear, not only to myself, to the Select Board, but to everybody that was in the room at our fall town meeting, that residents do want to open up Bliss Pool and voted overwhelmingly in favor to do so. I'm not even sure if the Select Board can rescind the direction of the voters. And I personally wouldn't be in favor of even considering that as an option. The goal was to put Bliss Pool project out for winter bids, as previously mentioned, with the hope that the bids would come in much lower over the winter time from what was asked on the town warrant at the town meeting. With that said, we can put these excess funds, in my opinion, to use elsewhere, whether it's towards OPEB or something else, which I believe came up in our five-year capital plan documents recently. In closing on this issue, I previously stated my support for Bliss Pool as well as for maintaining and enhancing our parks and green spaces. This, to me, is an issue about providing and maintaining opportunities for residents of all ages. So thank you for that. So I did want to make sure that I was clear on the letter from the Finance Committee. And I also just want to be clear once again that the Finance Committee does have a lot of, you know, important issues that come up in front of them on a regular basis. And every single person on that board, I do believe they're putting their best interests for the town of Long Meadow and they have to make difficult decisions and opinions. But I believe on this matter that it is overwhelmingly supported by the town and we should be funding Bliss Pool and I'm going to continue to be in support of that. So the other comment I wanted to make was really an exciting one. A painting project that I led at Blueberry Hill School. So really over the past year or so, you know, being on the Select Board, we've toured several buildings, several properties, town-owned properties. And really what's been shocking to me personally has been the deferred maintenance within our town buildings all across town, specifically in our schools. You know, I went to Williams Middle School and quite honestly, it looks the same way it did, you know, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, whenever I went to Williams Middle School. So over the past few months, I wanted to help find a way that the town could work with some of the key stakeholders in the community and the region. So I had developed a good relationship over time with the Hampton County Sheriff's Department and working with them as well as Lynn Simmons, Nick Gorgantis, our facilities director in town, and our state representative, Brian Ash. We were able to complete a painting project at Blueberry Hill School over the holiday break. So I'm proud to say that this is saving the town upwards of around $50,000 for the residents of the town on this project. So the Sheriff's Department, they were able to tackle a sizable portion which entailed peeling wallpaper in the connector cafeteria hall, the gym, the elevator vestibule area, the wallpaper was removed, walls were repaired and prepped, primed and painted. The cove base was also removed and replacement is being delivered for in-house install. So again, I really, I want to thank, like I said, Representative Ash for his support of this, the relationship that I personally built with him over time as well as Sheriff Cochee and the Sheriff's Department for, once again, this is their third major project in Long Meadow that I have worked with the Sheriff's Department on. The other two were cleaning up of Fanny Stubbs down in the meadows, which we hauled out mattresses and tires and other items that were in the meadows. And then we did a town-wide cleanup of the Sheriff's Department. And then most recently, like I mentioned tonight, the painting project. So couldn't be, you know, more appreciative of the Sheriff's Department and all the work that they've done and the money that we're saving the town in Long Meadow with this project. So with that, I will stop talking and telling you about all the other meetings I've attended. But I just want to say thank you for their continued support. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other Select Board comments? Mark Gold?
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, I have a few. I just want to, you know, make comment on driving through the town of Long Meadow. Actually, I'm going to likely propose to Tom that at the next meeting we take some action to direct the DPW and the police to not approve any future road cut permits by Eversource until Route 5 is fixed up. Those people who've driven Route 5, both the areas south of Maple and north of Converse Street, I think would agree that the road's a mess. It's a mess primarily because of where it's been cut and not properly repaired by Eversource. The other thing is that I think we need to ask the DPW in their role to, as communicant to Eversource, to get a real construction plan from Eversource for gas repairs for projects in Long Meadow in 2024. When Eversource was president in our November 6th meeting, they told us there'd be only three or four projects. And shortly after that, we found out that there were going to be a lot more than that. In fact, you know, at the time, I think the community liaison, Joe Mitchell, is telling us that he's now since left Eversource. He's probably a new community relations manager. We didn't need to know what they're planning to do because I think everybody acknowledged that the roads are a mess. And Route 5 is the main thoroughfare through the town. It's a disaster. I mean, you know, I'm sure everybody will look at that. So I'm going to be moving that way. The other thing is, just a couple of comments. I wanted to let people know that the Scenic Valley Healthcare, as a contractor who's offered at no cost assists the town in fulfilling some ACA reporting requirements. I know our HR department knows about it, but I think people should understand that this is one of the benefits we get by being part of the Scenic Valley Healthcare Consortium instead of going through some other process. It's pretty beneficial. Think the, you know, most of us are attending a Mass Municipal Association meeting this coming weekend, Friday, Saturday in Boston. And just so people understand, I've been asked to be a presenter on behalf of Long Meadow. I'm going to be presenting a workshop. It's called, Are You Paying Too Much for Trash and Recycling Services? It's given with the DEP. So I think it's good for Long Meadow to be representative to show our trash collection program and our trash reduction program. The other thing is I attended a meeting of last week's, last week's meeting of the Permanent Building Committee. And at the time, they were reviewing the capital plan. And I'll just make this comment now, I'm sure they can speak for themselves later, but they expressed some concern that there was a single item on the capital plan, which is a chiller for Will Swamp Road School. That's, I think, about a third of the available capital. And they were considering recommending to the Select Board or to the town manager that that be treated like we would a roof or other significant costs like that and bond it, thereby freeing up our capital to do other projects. It is a substantial cost. It also lasts, you know, the chiller we have is an original chiller, so it's been there, I don't know, 25 or 30 years. We expect a new one to last that long as well. But I think that people should hear that that's a consideration that the Permanent Building Committee is making. And finally, in conjunction with that, I also was talking with the building, Permanent Building Committee about the plan because part of the capital plan, long-range plan, consists of some items for town hall, alley and door of the community house. And I don't know if they're the elevator or what they are, they're a couple of two and a half million dollars. But at some point, I think the Select Board needs to start looking at some long-range capital planning. If we go back to what we've been presented last year, just some of the numbers were tree inventory. The tree inventory update in June was 4.8 million dollars over five years. The street repairs were 24 million dollars over three to five years. Water and sewer projects excluding the L project, which itself was $10 million, which we're funding, were in the order of probably 25 or 28 million dollars. If we add to that now a projection that we may want to do something at the community house or indoor town hall to bring that up to stuff and bring the offices, which we're now planning to move to Greenwood Center back there, I think it's going to take some tough capital planning on our part to see how we handle all these things. And I just want to keep those on the forefront of everybody's minds. That's my summary. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mark. Vinay?
Thanks, Tom. I just wanted to just jump in quickly. I don't have much more to add, but since the topic of the Finance Committee's letter and, you know, what they've said about Bliss Pool and delaying the funding, I just wanted to also throw, you know, wanted to just give my opinion on it as well and say that, you know, the people spoke at town meeting. I don't think we even have, I don't know if we have the authority to even delay it. I appreciate the Finance Committee thinking through this issue and offering their thoughts. But to take a drastic step like that would be a break glass in case of emergency situation. But, you know, as the Finance Director and Tom Andrew told us when they presented us with the budget, this is very common that we have a deficit to start, deficit projection to start, and that we go through the process and we're able to end up at level service. So we, you know, I trust that process. And I think this was just one of those situations where it got people very wild up and, you know, very up in arms. And if anything, I hope that it puts people at ease to hear all of us say that we're not in support of such an approach. But again, you know, I appreciate the Finance Committee thinking through this and offering their thoughts. And in some ways, it is good for them to be thinking about, you know, worst-case scenario and what, you know, we would have to do. But I do want to make sure that people know that this is not something that at this point we are considering or anything like that. You know, I hope it puts people at ease.
Thank you, Vinay. All right. Next, we'll move to the town manager's report for January 16th. Lynn Simmons?
Thank you. So you'll see, first off, on my report is the quarterly legal update. So the first one was done, or I'm sorry, it's showing you October and then now where we are for January 12th when we publish the report. We're tracking very well for this fiscal year so far, so we're going to continue to closely monitor this. As you'll see on there, there's no cost yet for this fiscal year for the DPW matter, but that is picking up with discovery again. And I believe that we're going to be closing in on getting a trial date sometime for the end of July. So we will start seeing the costs increase there. The real estate tax abatement program, we've put out a call for applications and I'm happy to say that we had 29 applications come in so far. And the Adult Center Director is working on placement for those people that have qualified. The EV chargers have gone live. We've been continuing to monitor the feedback, both positive and negative. There's been quite a few comments about the price of charging. And working with Lisa at the DPW, we're going to prepare an update for a future Select Board meeting once we've reached our first billing cycle with the utility. Once we've reached our first billing cycle with the utility, we'll compare that against the cost that's come in for charging and make any, uh, recommendations on changes that are necessary. Uh, but they have been seeing some good use and the, um, code enforcement vehicles also have been benefiting from those being live as well. Um, just to give you an update on some repairs that are necessary through, uh, the fire department. Ambulance Medic One had suffered a vi- a breakdown recently. Uh, this is a longer issue that the fire department's been monitoring. We have diesel fuel seeping into the engine oil. The DPW mechanic's been assisting the fire department with trying to, uh, source out what's exactly happening here. But ultimately, the decision was made to send the vehicle out for service, um, and get a formal diagnosis. Um, they have determined that it's all related to the pollution control system and it's an issue with the fuel injectors and a sensor. It was initially thought to be an under ten thousand dollar repair. However, uh, after the complete diagnosis, its new estimate is about seventeen thousand. So this, um, this is actually, uh, going to more than exhaust the vehicle maintenance budget in the fire department right now. They're already about ninety-seven percent expended and that's after that eleven thousand dollar, uh, appropriation that was done at the special town meeting in November. It just had a rough go of equipment failures. Um, this, uh, Medic One is a twenty eighteen F one fifty diesel, has eighty-three thousand miles on it, a hundred and seventy thousand hours. Uh, it's fifty percent service life in the fleet plan. So it's out of warranty, but we still heavily rely on this vehicle. Um, and, um, one of the ways that we're considering funding this repair is ma- we've made a request to the Finance Committee to use the reserve fund. So I have reached out to them and I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's the avenue that we're looking to go to fund this repair. Uh, and then the lifeguard course, as you announced, um, has, uh, been put together by the Parks and Recreation Department. It's going to be held over February break at Long Meadow High School. Um, and I'm really happy to say that within the twenty-four hours of announcing the course, it completely filled up. So there were ten spots. It's full at this time. There's now a waitlist. Uh, if we can get ten additional people to sign up, we're going to try to secure a second instructor. Uh, as of, um, pre- preparing this report, we had six people on the waitlist. Not sure if that's grown over the weekend. It might have. Um, and so we're also looking for ways to entice those lifeguards who take that course to come work for the town afterwards. So we're getting creative in how we're gonna look at doing that, whether it's a return bonus for people, um, coming back or, um, whether we'll help pay for the course after completion of working for us for the summer. Um, and we plan to post these positions as soon as the wage and classification study is done, which should be in the next week or two, uh, which is right on schedule for when we do normally post for summer positions. Uh, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
Okay, that sounds great. Um, I'm sure it, I guess the quest, first thing is like, uh, seventeen thousand dollars for a diesel engine for a truck? I mean, that seems really high, but I guess that's the way it is. The equipment with that. Um, there are a couple of things with the fire department. One is that they, they reported they've had a number, uh, a record number of calls, which is good. And seventy-two percent of those are for, uh, emergency medical technicians to help citizens, uh, who were having, you know, in a serious, um, emergency crisis. And so, you know, we think of a fire department primarily as putting out fires, but we look at, they're, they're saving people's lives quite a bit and, um, and that's, you know, that, that really is a, a big deal. Um, the other thing is I noticed that the, uh, um, in the police report, they suggested using gel pens to sign your checks. Um, hopefully people know the difference between a gel pen and a regular ball pen pen, but people have been erasing some of the checks and, um, filling in higher amounts. Um, and the police are on it, which is a big deal. And I know I've heard about it in my neighborhood also. Um, but the thing was they talked about eat the, the shared person between East Long Meadow and Long Meadow that they hired a mental health clinician. And, um, you know, I'm excited about that. I think that's a great program. The person will be forty hours a week. Um, shared between our two towns. And when there's a psychiatric emergency, um, they'll be available. And I, I think that is a, a really, it's a step in the right direction. Um, and hopefully they'll stay with us for a long time. Uh, you know, a lot of our folks who go through the academy, we, we even lose some of those to other departments. Hopefully we won't lose this person. Um, and, uh, the other thing in the reports was, uh, about the, the CPC, uh, applications in the library for possible renovations. And, you know, those of us who've been on a tour of the library, especially in the basement area where they do a lot of work too. Um, you know, would know that they're, they need to do some planning and the, the trustees of the library are, are, um, put, building, you know, putting some support for this project. And, uh, I know we have a, a great library. Um, but we wanna make it a great working space for everybody. Um, and so I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Um, but, you know, uh, you know, the, the EV chargers, I know we, all of the board members have heard from folks. Uh, not quite sure about our, our ratio of, um, uh, you know, how much we charge per, per hour of, uh, charging. But, um, I appreciate Lynn that you're, you're trying to come closer to getting a, what would be a, a fair deal. Cause we, we made it clear, we didn't want the town to lose a lot of money, but we do wanna encourage people driving electric, electric vehicles. And that's, uh, it'd be easier if the electric company would help us with that, but they, they don't seem wanna give us a discounted rate. But, uh, all right, that, that's all I have. But thanks for all the reports that we've received. Thank you. Any other questions, Mark, or, and then Vene?
All right. My only question for Lynn is, you said that you were hoping to get back to the select board about the EV chargers because there've been so many comments. Do you have any target date? Is this in February or we're not gonna, we wanna get three months worth of data? Is there, do you have any projection on that?
Um, I think my initial plan had been to see what this next billing cycle, which closes the end of this week, what we gather from data there and compare it to what we've taken in so far in these first, um, really three weeks since the chargers have been active. Depending on whether I have enough to present to you at that point, I would bring it to you to February fifth. Um, but if not, then I'll, I'll wait and see what the, um, next February billing cycle looks like. But I plan to try to keep you updated very quickly. Cause if we're going to make a change, I'd like to do it sooner than later so that people don't get used to the machines at a certain rate and maybe, you know, stop using them because they think it's too high. Um, if we're going to reduce it down, uh, I'd like to do it sooner, but I, I don't know that yet. It's too, too soon to say.
And finally, do, do all these chargers have individualized meterings systems other than what is, is through the billing system?
The, the location does. Each location does. But each port does not. But each port, um, the software for the port tells us whether, uh, which one is specifically is being used. But, uh, it's a separate meter for the location.
Thank you.
Okay, Vene?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, Lynn, thank you for, you know, addressing a couple of things on your Town Manager's Report that, um, I think has been of interest in town, the EV chargers, obviously. And just to kind of go back to the conversation, I think this conversation was actually probably had even before I was on the select board that, uh, well, the conversation began. You know, we are kind of in this position because Eversource didn't give us any kind of clarity on the rates that they, you know, could possibly offer us. And so we do need to be in this data gathering phase right now to see, uh, you know, about, you know, time of day and, you know, all of that and, and what kind of rates we're getting before we can decide on a rate that makes sense for the town. So right now, you know, I think people are, I'm getting a lot of, you know, comments from folks about how it's high, but explaining to them again that this is just the very beginning where this is a process that, and that we kind of need this grace period here to just be able to collect this data ourselves. Um, and then the lifeguard, um, you know, class and signups, that was also great to hear that we, you have a waitlist. That's something that, I know people have been concerned about as well. So that was really great to hear. And then, um, with the senior, um, with the senior ta- property tax abatement program as well. I'm glad we expanded it up to thirty. Looks like, you know, that was, that was the right decision. Um, and that, you know, folks are making use of it. I'm really glad to hear that. And then just to piggyback on what Tom said too, from the Police Department report, the co-response mental health clinician. It's great to see that we've found someone that we found, think is the right fit. I don't know if, they said that we've actually hired that person. I think we've made an offer. So hopefully they accept, uh, but that's exactly the kind of forward-thinking, um, you know, opportunity that I want us to be taking advantage of as a town and to be looking at. So that's really great that, that we're moving forward with that. And then I also wanted to comment on the DPW report. Uh, it was in the DPW report that the L Water Main Project, that the bid came in at five point five million. And, you know, that's below, uh, far below what we were projecting. And this is, you know, I, I wanna give credit to Lynn and to Sean, our DPW Director. When they brought this to us, part of the case they were making for why we should move forward on it was that if we brought it out to bid at the beginning of the year, that we might get, uh, favorable bids. And that's exactly what happened. And of course, there's a little bit of luck involved, but, um, you know, we were in that position because you guys presented it to us that way and you guys kind of foresaw that that was a possibility. And I'm, you know, glad to see that this is such an important project that we're going to be able to move forward on so quickly and that we are going to come, you know, with the, with the, and that we also got a really good bid price on it as well.
Thanks. Um, just quickly on that, I will cover that in more detail in a future Town Manager Report. I'm glad you brought it up. Um, the bid opening just happened on Thursday last week and I wait for it to go through the full contract cycle before I put it in writing in my report. But you're right, uh, we were really happy to see that and I'm hoping, um, that comes all to fruition when I get the contract to sign. I'll have dates in there that can be more specific for you all.
Great. Any other questions or comments for the, um, Town Manager's Report? We'll move on. Again, public hearings were, for tonight's meetings were canceled due to inclement weather. Um, old business, we have approval of the minutes for December fourth and December eighteenth meetings. We have a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the minutes of select board meetings of December fourth and December eighteenth of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay. Um, okay, I'll, we'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Mr. Lukisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Swirco?
Yes.
Mr. Hemobathy?
Yes.
All right. Um, the next thing we have is a, uh, a dog as a nuisance. There was a letter provided as an update on the August seventh, Dog As A Nuisance Hearing Orders and a waiver request for a screened porch, which included as a correspondence for our December meeting. Do any members of the board have any comments or concerns regarding this motion to accept the waiver?
I think we have a cat as a nuisance.
Yeah, he's our nuisance. He's the most fun part of the house. Okay, so, um.
And Tom, we also have Marty Lee here. If there was any additional questions, just to comment on anything.
Probably a good place to start, cause my cat just bit me. No. Hi, Marty Lee.
Hi.
So, um, you know, when we first heard this report on the dog, um, you know, it was pretty clear that he escaped through this door and then ran off the porch and caused difficulty. And, and that's the area in question, right, that we're discussing?
Um, so you had given a list of things that you wanted done and they've been working on, on them. They, you know, they got the, the, I, I videoed it and sent it to you, so I hope that you were all able to see it. Um, I got, they got the door, the extra door, they got the gate. Um, they've been doing training, um, working on the fence. But they requested from you guys, uh, an exception on the screen of the fence. And when I went out there to inspect, they had put a, uh, another gate and it's hard to explain it without, so I videoed it and sent it to you guys. But it's like a gate on the side. It's very, very narrow. I, in my view, um, I don't think you need that screened in, but I don't have the authority to say that. So they applied to you for the exception. It's whether or not you grant it. If you don't, then I need to tell them they have to get the screen and go in and inspect it. If you do allow it, I will tell them that they've done enough. Have you seen the videos that I sent?
Um, Marty Lee, I'm not sure. I ha- I'll have to look back to see, cause I think you may have sent those a while back. I have to look back to see if those were ever sent. I think the documents that they have in hand is the letter, um, and all the other supporting documents I think I have. So I'm not sure the video was included in that actually.
Okay, cause it, it's hard to explain to get you to guys to visualize. That's why I videoed it, other than you guys going out and looking at it. But, um, the best I can explain it is so there's the gate at the bottom of the stairs and there's this extra, um, storm door on the top of the stairs. And then they have a very narrow porch and they put another gate um, to the side, blocking off that side porch. And the gate goes as high as my hips. So it's pretty high. And for the dog to jump that, that onto this narrow, like it's maybe as wide as my two feet together, um, like, I'm, I'm trying to think, like, how many inches? I mean, it's very narrow. So for it to jump over that high gate into that narrow spot and then go high up, I don't think it can get the leverage to go up over that porch that you had requested screened in. Um, again, I wish, uh, you know, I could send you guys the video if I had your cell phone numbers, but, um, so they're requesting to not have to do the screen. That's why we're here.
All right. And Marty Lee, I, I don't think we really could do a better job than you. You know, in terms of looking at it and trying to figure it out. Um, and so if you're saying, you know, I can't see, I mean, I can see a cat could jump into a small space and you're saying a dog is not very likely. Um, now, you know, one option that the board may wanna consider is that we could have, um, we could do like a a temporary waiver, you know, and if there was any future complaints that we could, you know, we can reenact it. I mean, that's another way to go if we don't wanna remove the waiver or, or have a waiver completely eliminating it. But if there's no further, um, difficulties with this, with these animals, then, you know, that's just another way to think of doing it. Is that we could just say, doesn't have to be done unless there's a com- further complaint. Um, Mark, hold, you raised your hand.
Yeah, I think, Tom, based on what you said, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, we sus- we suspend the requirement for fencing in the, the, the front, front porch. And review this in another year and it's still, everything's good. We, then, then we probably take further action. My motion is we, we suspend that requirement.
Second.
Okay, that sounds very reasonable. Any further discussion?
No, I mean, I, 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 I take Marty Lee's word for it. I said at the last meeting that I, I'm impressed with how many of the steps they've already taken. And I think that this was something where we were asking the screen on the porch as, you know, it was almost overkill, just to make absolutely sure. But, um, I think that what they've done instead, that makes sense to me. And so I feel comfortable with the steps that they've taken and, and I, and I thank them for, you know, being so compliant and working so quickly for all of these, um, different requirements that we've put out.
Yeah, they are spending a lot of money. So that will be helpful if they don't have to put the money into the, you know, these days, everything is so expensive. So, and they are fencing the back and stuff, so.
Yeah. And I don't, you know, you, you have to deal with a lot of cases where, Marty Lee, you've done a great job with, with these folks too. I mean, I, I think that's part of it is that they, um, you know, you've done a nice job for the town.
Uh, thank you. They've, they have been cooperative. Not everyone is.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Uh, why don't we do a roll call vote?
Mr. Kisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zerco?
Yes.
Mr. Hemobathy?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Marty Lee.
Thank you. Um, Mike, am I free to, uh, leave?
Yes, you're all set.
Okay, have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so next we have is a, um, a common victular license application. We need to improve this for batch ice cream, which serves food. Is there a motion to approve this for twenty twenty-four?
I'll make a motion, we approve the common victular, uh, license for batch ice cream.
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote? Yes, I'm in favor.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Swirko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemobathy?
Yes. Uh, new business, the town treasurer received bids on January eleventh, twenty twenty-four for eleven million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars for general, general obligation municipal purpose loans of twenty twenty-four bonds dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four to Raymond James and Associates Incorporated at a true interest cost at three point six nine. That's probably enough. Uh, finance director Ian Cottington, or the, the town treasurer collector, uh, would you like to comment further on this, on the bid? And it sounds like a pretty good rate. Oh, we have Erica Brunel? Oh, no, there's Ian.
I believe Erica and Ian are both in.
Okay, any comments on this bond rating? Ian, you want to start?
Sure. So Erica, thank you for all the work that you've done, is to getting this set up. I think the biggest thing that the select board needs to know, I guess the two biggest things is the true interest cost of the bond, as well as who we went with for our bond. I believe Erica has shared with you the correspondence related to the several bids that we've received. And the town has gone with Raymond James and Associates. So Raymond James and Associates has dealt with public financing in the past. In the, in the last year, they've managed more than thirteen billion of competitive issues related to state and local governments. So this is a firm that has dealt with large bonding in the past. And it's something that we can rely upon in order to make sure the bond is facilitated correctly. And in terms of the total interest cost, uh, the total interest cost of the bond is, um, three point uh, six nine, one, five, two, eight. So the bond is going to be at five percent uh, for five years and then go down to four percent for the life of the loan, for the life of the bond.
Okay. Erica, do you have anything to add? Is there?
Ian, I apologize on my memo. I did not include what this bond was covering per use of. Um, there are seven projects that are included in this bond. The Water Main L Project, the Sewer Main L Project, the water quality flow enhancements, sewer capacity management, sewer water asset management, Emerson Road Water Maines, and the Cooley Drive Water Maines. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that those are the projects included, um, as I did forget to put those in the memo, so I apologize for that.
Okay, thanks for correcting that. Uh, Mark Gold?
A couple of things. One is, so with, with these being significantly water projects, the cost of this bond entirely, partially paid for out of the water and sewer enterprise fund, water and sewer fees? Uh, can you just, is it entirely or partially? And the, the, I guess the second question I'd ask is just to explain for people who may be listening, how our interest rate is five percent for the first uh, ten year or eight years, and then goes down to four percent. But yet, the true cost of the bond is three point six nine percent. You know, how does that? How do, how do you pay five percent interest, four percent interest, but yet have a true cost of three point six nine? That has to do with, you know, prepayments and all that kind of stuff. But if you can just explain that, it'd be helpful.
Sure. So I guess, I guess I'll go with that question first. So when a bond is issued, we don't issue the bonds at the full and fair value of the bond. So although we are getting eleven million dollar bonds, different firms will pay either a premium or discount in order to purchase this bond for coupon payments. These coupon payments are what the town pays on an annual basis in order to facilitate the bond. So in our case, there was a premium amount paid for our bond purchase, which decreases the total interest cost over the life of the bond. Because these firms are paying more for the bond, therefore, the coupon payment, this interest rate that's paid over an annual period, is less in the long term. And Mark, your first question was um, related to the water and sewer.
Yeah, and the proceeds coming entirely or partially out of the water and sewer enterprise funds?
Sure. So I believe I spoke to this at a prior meeting, but the plan in place is the bond proceeds will be used to reduce the overall impact on the water and sewer rates. This is going to be used in tandem with reducing the water and sewer retained earnings, which we have built up in the past couple of years. So the plan in place is to use the bond proceeds and any interest related to the disbursement of this loan in order to, um, work in between the period of payment. So what I mean by that is there's going to be a dispersment of eleven million dollars that isn't going to be immediately used for this project. So that means there's going to be a period of time where we're going to be collecting interest on this bond. That will be used to reduce the amount of water rate that residents will be paying, along with the retained earnings in these enterprise accounts that we have going forward.
Right, I, I, I think I understood, but the, the question is, this, these are all, you know, there's, none of this is coming out of property taxes. It's all coming out of the enterprise fund.
That's correct. So I apologize. That, that is, that's correct.
Okay, so, and, and I guess though, I, because of Lynn's report, the, the true cost of, of the L project now is significantly less than we thought. How does that impact these funds? Now, are we going to have a substantial excess in funds or?
So I spoke to Ben Auguste on the phone on Friday. Ben is the financial advisor who I've been working with to, uh, do the bond sale. What he told me on the phone is that any funds that we were dispersed related to this general obligation bond, as long as it's used for water and sewer main projects, that we can use this towards other projects in the future. So if we decide that come May or June, we have additional projects that come up, we're able to use excess funds for those projects.
Okay, that sounds, so, because there's a chance that some of these projects, the estimates may go higher than the actual prices, or are those, are all the set, are those set prices for all these projects or?
I mean, there's certainly a chance that there could be some overrun with change orders or what have you, but at least we have a large enough cushion right now that if there is any issues, we have enough taken out that it's not a problem.
Okay, sounds like good planning. I mean, well, good, it's going to work out well for us. Um, any other questions on this?
Yeah, and Tom, I, I just, Erica, can you remind me what we're now getting for CD investments from our higher banks? And we're going to have twelve, eleven, you know, it's actually twelve point one nine million dollars of cash that we're going to get from the proceeds of these things. And we're not going to be spending it all, so a lot of it's going to be invested. So the question is, you know, we're not making money on it. We're paying three point six nine percent. What are we getting in, in interest? I'm concerned frankly that we're over borrowing for water projects that we currently now find we don't need it. That's, I'm just looking at what the interest rate is.
Absolutely. So I can tell you there are interest rates out there that are higher than that three point six nine, um, but due to arbitrage laws, we are not allowed to borrow more than we are, um, paying in interest. So we would have to keep it in line with that three point six nine, but it would not be a problem to get that rate.
Thank you.
Good question, Mark.
Mark, as a, as a follow-up to your question, I spoke with Ben as well about what it would take, or if it's possible to reissue the bond or cancel the bond because of the chance that we overborrowed. And he said it would be more expensive and more difficult, almost neither impossible to wind that back. So once this is in place, it's a very difficult process to unwind.
Yeah, and I realized we'd have to go to town meeting to reverse the, I, I, I get, we've done it. It's difficult. The point where you don't want to do it, actually.
Okay. So what we're looking for is a motion from the, a member of the select board to, uh, to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the sale of, of eleven million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in general obligation municipal purpose bonds to Raymond James and Associates at a premium price of twelve million, one hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred sixty dollars and five cents.
Second.
Can I just butt in real quickly before you finalize that? Can you just state that you're approving each of the votes? Um, on the vote of select board paper that I supplied, it's three pages, there's multiple votes. Um, the vote that you make tonight has to specifically say that you're approving each of those votes um, as one motion, but that you're covering all of them in that motion. So I just want to make sure we have that.
Yeah, Mark, can you just make?
Sure, I'll, it's going to take a while, because I'm going to read it exactly as, as she put it, because I think we need to do that. And Mike, you can copy it and put it into the minutes, but I'll move that we approve the, of bonds maturing January fifth, twenty fifty-four. Uh, as follows, twenty fifty-two, five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, twenty fifty-three, five hundred fifty thousand dollars, and twenty fifty-four, five hundred forty thousand dollars. And we further vote that we move that in conjunction with the marketing and sale of the bonds, preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January fourth, twenty twenty-four, and a final official statement January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Each and the form as may be approved by the town treasurer and are hereby ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further move that the bonds be subject to redemption at the out option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. I also move that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by town council, bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with the relevant security laws. Further, I move that the any certificates or documents related to the bonds be executed in several counterparts, each of which will be regarded in an original and all, which shall constitute one and the same document delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail and a PDF file or other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And the electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the for, for the purposes of the documents and all matters related thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. And finally, I move that each member of the select board, town clerk, and the town treasurer be and are hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and delivery execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Okay, there's, you can see there's a few minor word revision, uh, that Mark has made, so maybe just get that second to revision, um, to that motion. Do you want a second?
Second.
Okay. And, uh, if there's no further discussion, we'll go to the roll call vote.
Mark, do you want to repeat that again?
No. I had it right in front of me. It was pretty, pretty spot on. Uh, Mr. Lukisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Swirko?
Yes.
Mr. Hemobathy?
Yes.
Um, and just, uh, to touch on this one more step, uh, tomorrow morning, if you guys could come in and, and sign it uh, in Erica's office at town hall, um, sometime in the morning, that would be great. She, she'll have all of them prepared. Yeah, and beneath, you need to sign the, the overall document as the.
I do have that page for you too. Um, just make sure you have your writing hands ready. There's lots and lots and lots of pages. It's time with all the different projects.
Okay, great. So, yeah, tomorrow morning, we'll have to make sure that, um, well, the way the roads were last, when I drove in, we won't, we shouldn't have any trouble getting there. So, um, thank you very much. Uh, Ian, I don't know if there's another thing that you need to be here for. It doesn't look like it. Oh, maybe there's an occurring debt? Or do you, with Westcom, do you care about, is that something you would discuss or no?
I mean, I'll certainly be here if, if need be, but I think, I think Lynn's taking care of that.
I think it's sort of beyond the town, or beyond the whole thing. All right, so thank you very much. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is a, uh, an insert request for the utility bill. And under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty, Section three A, non-political municipal information material can be included in tax bills as an insert. And it calls for the approval by the local select board. And there's two requests in front of the board tonight. One for the DPW and the other for the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Uh, Lynn, would you like to comment on these two, um, insert requests?
Sure, just broadly, um, it, we received, my office received a request from the Energy and Sustainability Committee for an insert. Um, in looking into this a little bit more and talking with the treasurer collector, she, uh, pointed out to me that there is a mass general law that requires the select board to approve, uh, inserts that go into utility bills. And so that was the law that was attached here. Uh, at the same time, I had a conversation with DPW, who is preparing an insert for the next billing cycle about, um, uh, water barrels, the rain barrels. Um, so I wanted to bring that forward to you too. Uh, this is definitely a change in how it's been, how we've been doing it. Um, but I want to make sure that we're doing this the right way. And we could talk in the future about maybe changing the procedure, if it was a department one. You know, I'm imagining you don't want to approve rain barrels every single time they want to put an insert in. But, um, we could talk about that later on. But tonight, you do have the rain barrel one, and then you have one from Energy and Sustainability Committee. A sample of both were attached to your agenda, and Doug Taylor from the Energy and Sustainability Committee is here to speak to their insert.
Uh, sure, and it, it has to do with, uh, heating options, right, that are more sustainable, Doug?
Uh, has, had to do with encouraging home energy assessments. Have, have somebody come in and look at ways you can improve your energy efficiency. It could lead to improving your heating system. But we're, we're, we continue to encourage home energy assessments as a way for people to help the town improve its energy efficiency.
Okay, and it's no charge to residents?
Not initially. They, they may elect, they may elect services that cost money, but they're pretty substantial, uh, price cuts for them to, to take services. Plus, there are various rebates and tax credits that are available to them depending on what they do.
Right, but the, the, um, you know, the, the notice that will be sent out uh, won't incur any charges for people if they say, yes, I want to get an assessment. There's no charge, right?
Correct.
Right, I mean, I know that, but I just want to say it in public. So people would, would, you know, okay, you know.
It starts with get your no cost, no cost mass save home energy assessment.
That's right. Good. So, thank you. Uh, Mark Gold?
Yeah, question, when, when this says utility bill inserts, are these our water bills? Is that what's intended, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, and this, that, we do not intend to we, we do not intend to put anything into tax bills, only water bills. Is that correct?
Correct.
So haven't we done that in the past, though?
Yes.
But we, we weren't supposed to, I guess, right?
Right, without the approval of the select board, yes.
Okay, I think bo, both of these have to do with saving energy utility, you know, one is direct water, the rain barrels. I, I think it's utility bills, water bills is a good place to put that one. I'm not sure about the energy conservation, we, our energy audits, those have been pretty ubiquitous in, in our utility billing, you know, electric and gas bills that I get from Eversource. But if, you know, if, if the Energy and Sustainability Committee thinks there's value in it, the question is, is there added cost to us to do it? And if so.
It's, it's not, it's not so much to connect with the water bill. It's because it's a way to reach everybody in town, uh, It's, it's not, it's not so much to connect with the water bill, it's because it's a way to reach everybody in town, um, with a mailer that they're less likely to throw out than in- independent mailing that says, here's something, here's a letter from town's Energy and Sustainability Committee. So it's, it's a different way to try to reach people to encourage home energy assessments. And there isn't a cost to print these mailers, it's a little over five hundred dollars, and it's coming out of a, a green community grant that town received a year or two ago.
This sounds good.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, uh, well, beneath first and then Dan.
Yeah, no, I, I'm in favor of, you know, approving both of these. I think there have been a lot of studies and research done on exactly this topic, that there are enough, that there are, you know, an abundance of resources and aid um, to address a whole host of issues plaguing our society, whether it's poverty, or, you know, uh, climate change, but the, but one of the, the biggest issue is that people are just not taking advantage of those resources, and that's be, that's because our government, um, federal level, state level, local level, doesn't do a good job of, you know, making that connection and of connecting people with those resources and those opportunities. So, um, you know, I think there have been studies done specifically on this of, of putting inserts like this in utility bills, and we've seen enrollments in those programs increase dramatically. So, uh, anything to get this information in front of folks where they can take advantage of it, uh, is a great idea. So I'm in support of both of these, uh, inserts.
Okay, and Dan, did you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I fully supported them as well. I think it's a great idea. Uh, uh, Mr. Taylor, appreciate you coming here tonight as well, and I was just curious, a quick question, um, uh, is, is your committee looking, um, at some of the data in terms of success story of, of doing this insert, you know, six months from now? Uh, things like that, just to see, you know, how successful it was compared to, you know, previous years when, when we didn't do an insert.
We're using a partner, Home Works and Energy. Um, they do track the number of assessments that do come through and what happens subsequently in terms of what actions are taken. And we've just started reporting on that type of information on our, our website.
Excellent, yeah, I really appreciate it. I think it's a great program. Um, thanks for your service, really appreciate it.
Okay, so can we get a motion to, uh, allow the insert of these requests, uh, this, uh?
I move to approve the DPW request for a utility bill insert.
And second?
Second.
Right, and I guess we can vote on this one. Um, all those in favor, we'll call vote.
Mr. Luciza?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Suroco?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Okay, and then for the, uh, the second for the Energy and Sustainability insert?
Um, I move to approve the Energy and Sustainability Committee's request for a utility bill insert.
Second.
Okay, um, we'll call vote, all those in favor?
Mr. Luciza?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Suroco?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you, Doug, for joining us tonight. And, uh, it's a lot, generates a lot of participation.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, so.
Thank you.
Complete Streets, um, you know, we approved this quite a while ago, uh, pretty early in my tenure on the select board. Um, and, uh, Marie Angelidis was a big promoter of this because it helps us get funding for road construction when you have a complete streets approach, because it involves bike lanes, sidewalks, and, and in addition to everything else. And so Lynn, um, has been looking at this and looking at maybe an update on how do we prioritize, prioritize our, our plan, because every now and then we must have to turn a new plan. Lynn, would you like to comment?
Thank you. Yeah, so in my mem, in my, um, memo, I detail out, uh, where we are and where we need to be going. Um, and one of the big things that was discovered as this was reviewed with DPW staff is that the first prioritization plan did not appear to have any public input. Uh, and that, that is a best practice recommendation of a complete streets plan, and so this time we want to make sure we get it right. And, uh, I would like to, um, convene a group primarily made up of those members of the Traffic and Roads Advisory Group, but also bring in, um, a couple members of the public to, um, to weigh in with us on developing this prioritization plan. Uh, it would then come back to the board for, um, for review, and then once approved, we would send it off to MasD, uh, Mast Dot. Uh, and that would be registered as our new prioritization plan that we would use to move forward on other complete street, uh, funding opportunities. Um, I'm open to suggestions if the board has a different way that they'd like to handle this, uh, but I would like to get this going sooner than later because, um, the, the plan's fairly old at this point, um, and we really have not made as much progress on it as I had hoped we would have um, over the years. A lot of that, you know, predates me and predates the DPW. Uh, but this, this new, y- you know, the new staff that we have in place, they're really eager to make sure that we have all this in place, uh, because there are a lot of grant opportunities out there if we have an updated prioritization plan.
All right, uh, Lynn, my first question would be, you know, we've done a lot of different surveys of our township, and is there any results from those surveys that would address this and promote complete streets? Because I know a lot of people say one of the best things about town is how easy, how bikeable it is and so forth. Um, so do we have any data that we may already have collected from residents?
Um, that's a good question. I'll have to look into that. We might have some broad ideas of things, but I don't know that we've ever put out a survey that would have given us very specific locations of issues that we could identify as a, as a project. So it, it's not so broad as we want to improve, um, bike lanes throughout town. It's more narrowly focused to say the Bliss and Long Meadow Street intersection really needs, um, pedestrian crossing improvements, or, um, um, you know, turning lanes or, or something, bike lanes, bus stop clearly marked, things like that. Um, it, it wants a very specific area. So I'm not aware of a survey that would have identified that for us. I can certainly check with police and fire to see if they have something that I'm not thinking of, um, but it, it's a good suggestion to look at.
Yeah, well, maybe something we can add in addition. And, um, and the plan that we have in place, um, I, I didn't notice it on the agenda. Did we get a copy of the current plan? To look at?
Um, I linked it, uh, there in the memo. It's actu, it actually lives on the Mast dot website.
Okay, right.
So it is linked right there. Um, and then our, our complete streets policy, if you will, is actually a bylaw. And that itself doesn't really need a lot of updates. I skimmed through it. It, it's pretty generic enough. We will take a look at that as well, but really what we're focused on is the projects themselves. And, um, this will be led, this group will be led by Beta Engineering, who's doing a lot of our road work right now, or road planning work. They did the pavement, um, asset plan, and they've just completed the sidewalk plan. So really, this is a great natural next step to make sure that we're looking at all of the, um, areas and prioritizing projects.
Okay.
Um, and I realize there's a typo in my memo. I don't think I intended to have residents apply by January twentieth, that's only four days. Um, I, I believe I was probably saying January thirtieth, maybe. Um, I think I was giving two weeks for that. I can give longer if we think we need to. Um, I just would like to get this moving ahead sooner than later.
Okay, and the, uh, the only other suggestion I would have is if we, as, uh, my research background is always better, if you randomly select, so like, we randomly selected twenty-five residents, and then, you know, see if they participate and say, here's, here's our complete streets agenda, and would you have any comments on these things? Um, you know, when people are randomly selected, sometimes they're more likely to participate. And it's also the best way to get a representative sample of a large group is just to randomly select. Um, and it might be quicker in some ways to just get twenty-five people and say, here's a story, you know, um, but I'll leave that up to your crew. Uh, any other comments from the board on this? No, okay, so, uh, thanks for the update, um.
So, uh, just so I'm clear, are you all comfortable with the approach here that I, I solicit, you know, feed, I solicit, uh, interest from some residents? Uh, I would also love it if I had a select board member that wanted to participate. Um, I'm open to suggestions, though, if you have a different way with this, or if you want to sit with this longer, that's okay too. I just don't want this to, you know, be put on the shelf for four or five months.
Lynn, can you just touch on, like, what the demand for this committee or group would, would look like?
Yeah, I'm, I'm imagining we're gonna meet during the day just because of the availability of our, the engineering consultant. Uh, it's possible it could be late afternoon. Mostly the meetings, I think, would be virtual, and, um, uh, I don't think it's going to be a heavy lift. DPW already, obviously, is really well-versed in some problem spots, and we have the original list that we can look at and say, you know, some of these make sense, some of these don't, some were taken care of, and they need to come off the list. Um, but I, I think we're gonna heavily rely on what Beta Engineering is prepared and what DPW is already knows as some areas that, um, should be added. And then really, the group will evaluate that, maybe put their own spin on a few areas, and then, um, a- and then we'll finalize the list. So, you know, maybe four or five meetings.
Hmm, gotcha.
Yeah, I, I think Marie Angelis would be a great member of the public to participate. She, and she's well-versed in the complete street system too.
Yeah, she, that's true. All right, so then, um, it sounds, Lynn, it sounds like people have your support, am I correct in that assumption? Okay, so why don't you move forward and let us know how we can help. Uh, you can randomly select, well, me. So, uh, all right, so we'll move to the next item, which is the Westcom. Um, I think all the members of the board received a, a registered letter uh, about the ability, the Westcom Finance Committee and the Board of Directors have approved the district to incur additional debt. And, uh, the letter is also in the agenda under the District Agreement and Mass General Law, Chapters six A, Section eighteen R. They're required to advise each member of the Municipal Select Board of the intent. Um, any comments on this intent to incur debt, um, for the board, or? No, I mean, Lynn, do you have any comments about, I mean, this was just, they had, uh, assumed, they assumed a certain price for the renovations, and then has that just gone up? Is that what it is?
Yeah, so the original cost estimates have increased over the last year as the final designs were prepared. Uh, and so this is why it's coming back to you. You actually do not need to take any action on this unless it is to disapprove of this, um, bond request. Uh, if you, uh, um, disapprove, then it doesn't move forward at all for the entire Westcom Regional Dispatch. Um, if you do nothing, we just wait for the clock to run out, it's sixty days, and then Westcom can go out to borrow.
Okay.
Is, is the state still committed to paying the capital costs?
They are verbally.
Yeah, which is, which is not, but anyway, thanks, man.
Yep.
Yeah, when we first were having discussions about Westcom, everyone is like, well, you know, the state, they don't usually follow up and help, really help out, and it turns out that they have in this case. And, and the big controversy to do in this regional dispatch was the nine-one-one call money that was going to the state police, and now it goes to Westcom. And they're like, oh, you know, we'll never get that, the state police will never give up nine-one-one, you know, funds. And that happens also, so it's, it's, um, you know, we've ma, we've made out pretty well and partnered with a great community, um, and other communities have jumped on board. Uh, this is one of our more successful decisions, I think, uh, in terms of savings to the town. And, um, so I have full support of, uh, letting them have this new facility in Chickapee, um, you know, so I don't know if anyone else has the other comments, or if we just, you know, if you have any, you could hold a win, and we can discuss it further. All right, so the next is our appointment of an animal control officer. Uh, we annually designate this officer, and, uh, that gets sent to the Department of Agricultural Resources every year. And we have a great person to, we have a motion to designate, and uh, Mary Lee Camarante as an animal control officer for twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to appoint her? Mark Gold?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint Marty Lee Caramonte to our, as our animal control officer, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, um, I don't have much else to say. I think we all know what a good job she does. Um, we'll call vote, all those in favor?
Mr. Luciza?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Suroco?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Marty Lee. Um, and then we, uh, correspondence, is there any comments to correspondence posted in tonight's agenda? I know we addressed some of them when we talked about the, uh, EV chargers. Um, any other comments on those? Mark Gold?
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm the only one who didn't say we, sh- sh- we thank the Finance Committee for their comments and but, but we don't, aren't, aren't going to necessarily defer the funding. I, I, I think people understand that, and the reason I didn't say anything earlier, because clearly the, you know, I've been through this many times, the December finance review is always negative. It's no time to panic, certainly no time to make adjustments, and I think everybody else made the right comment that, you know, town meeting kind of trumps the opinion of, of, of a group of appointed individuals. And so we're, I think we're gonna move forward, and people out of here that we're gonna move forward with the, uh, the issues of of, of, you know, balancing the budget, but moving forward with the, with, with the pools. The other comment, though, I, I also wanted to make is we got a lot of, a lot of correspondence, and there's several in here, about the EV chargers. You know, I, a couple of people, I think, Tom, I copied you in on one response, I can't copy everybody in on responses, but, but I think the, the critical thing that I'm just gonna ask the select board to think about is what are we trying to achieve from the, from having these EV chargers in our town? And I think once we come to an agreement on what we're trying to achieve, then we'll better understand the approach that we've taken to it. And I'm not gonna answer those questions now, or even attempt to answer those questions, other than to say that these are not superchargers. They're not level three chargers, they're level two chargers, the same things people could put in their houses if they want to. Uh, but I think we need to identify, uh, what we want, what the purpose is of having EV chargers in town is, and once we do that, I think we'll understand where, what our approach should be. So, those were my two comments.
Yeah, yeah, and so on this, on the next meeting on the fifth, you know, I'm sure we'll have a robust discussion with some folks who've sent some of those letters, because they've added some new dimensions. So even though we may have looked at, um, you know, some of our goals with this, now there's other, other things to look at, you know, and so it'll be a good discussion and, um, hopefully, it would be nice if we could get Eversource to show up and say, we're gonna give you a, a lot of free electricity. I think that's gonna happen.
Now, they do that based on a, on, you know, a, it's called an electrical tariff they have. They're not gonna give us any breaks if they don't give it to anybody else, and it comes all through the DP, DPUC, so, you know, utilities are so highly regulated. It's, it's a tough, it's, it's a tough haul.
All right, um, if there's no further comments, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
No, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn and reconvene to executive session for the purposes or for the purpose of discussing co- collective bargaining, uh, a- a- agreements. Not to return to, not to return to open session.
Second.
Okay, uh, the comment I have is, thank you for my, yes, I was ready to handle. Uh, okay, uh, roll call vote, all those in favor?
Mr. Lukisa?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Rurko?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, work good one, and, uh, we'll talk to you guys on February fifth. I know.
Tom, just give me one second so I can remove everyone else, and then I'll let you know when we're all set.
Good.